The life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ohio State.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzarska.
Here.
Thank you. We are all here. Village President Broly is unavailable this evening, but we will move forward with the people's business. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment and address the board? Are we still checking for online and mobile?
We've not received any online or through phone calls or voicemail.
Okay, perfect. All right, we will close that portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. I will read the items and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the October 28th, 2024 Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes of the same meeting, accounts payable and summary report through November 12th in the amount of $3,039,595. And then the accounts receivable report, community development monthly report, and water production report, all for October 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Brzarska, second by Bowman. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
That carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to items for separate action. Our first item is a recommendation from the Planning and Zone Commission, excuse me, Zoning Commission, PCZ 2024-015, annexation, rezoning upon annexation, special uses and variances, Director App.
Thank you. The petitioners have requested annexation to the village for the property that's located at the end of Bore Avenue. They currently operate a truck repair and sales business on the property. This was developed to Kane County standards when it was built and has been operating in, and now they're looking to annex into the village. Several of the existing conditions do not meet our UDO requirements, hence the need for some variations. The petitioner also owns the property immediately to the east, on the south side of Bore Avenue, which is already incorporated into the Village of Montgomery. The area in the, that area is primarily zoned industrial. However, there are a couple of residences to the south that are in the county. The petitioner is seeking to annex and rezone to M1, which is similar to the zonings adjacent to it. They're requesting several special uses to continue operations out there. This includes motor vehicle repair and motor vehicle sales as well as outdoor storage. Because of these existing conditions don't meet the UDO, they do need eight variances. And many of these conditions for the special uses, or the existing conditions and what our special use standards are, it's a little bit impractical to try to meet those standards at this time. So they are requesting these variances, although with the improvements that they have planned, the site will be improved and increased screening from what is out there currently. So there will be an improvement in that regard. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing on November 7th, and after some discussion, they did recommend approval of the annexation, the rezoning, the special uses, as well as the variances with conditions. One of their additional conditions or modifications that they did request was providing a maximum for outdoor storage height. So they added a 15-foot maximum for any stored materials that's within 20 feet of a lot line for the outdoor storage. So that has been incorporated into the ordinances that are before you. So you do have three separate ordinances, one for the annexation, one for the rezoning, and then one for the special use and variations. And those conditions are outlined in those, in the respective ordinances that they're related to.
Okay.
We do have the petitioners here if you do have any questions, so.
During the planning commission sessions, excuse me, session, was that the only issue was the providing for the maximum height? Was that really the only concern that was brought up?
There was a little bit of discussion regarding the screening, and some expressed that they would like staff to take a good look at the final landscape plan when it comes in. It is subject to staff approval for a final landscape plan. So they just asked that that be taken into consideration when reviewing, when reviewing the plan. And the petitioner, I believe, did agree to add some additional landscaping as they could along that Route 30 frontage.
Are there any other questions or comments for Director App?
I, I have one. I can't remember how many years ago it was. It was the mulch company.
Yes.
That, and I'm talking about screening height in particular. We've given them, I think, a maximum of 15 feet. And when I drove by there the other day, I want to say it's at least 30 feet. And so what's the point in giving them a maximum limit if they're going to just disregard it and go to the maximum height that they want to go to anyway? What's the point?
Well, that's a different entity, but, and we know that those folks.
It's potentially the same issue here. I mean, what, what are, what teeth do the, does a village have to make sure that they maintain that 15-foot height?
So I mean, then it becomes a code enforcement issue. So you'd have the ability to take them to adjudication on it if they're not in compliance and then take it. And then in addition, as a special use condition, we have, you must maintain whatever conditions of a special use. So if they violate a condition of a special use, presumably you could revoke that as well. Again, it would depend on the exact violation, so it's hard to speculate, but you would have teeth both through the possible adjudication route and possible rescinding of the special use if they violated any of the conditions.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with, with this as it is. But then at some point, I would like to follow up on that other issue I just brought up, because maybe it needs to go to adjudication and also remove all that special use.
And if I remember correctly, they've been in violation before.
Many times, many times.
So my other question that just came up as Steve was talking, what are they planning to store outside that they need that? Because I'm thinking, well, maybe a truck could be that tall, but I mean, what, what's going to be outside that they need that height?
Good evening. Pat Griffin, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and it related to the last issue. We don't have material storage, which I think is the issue you were talking about. We have trailers. Most trailers are 13/6, which is why we, we arrived at that 15-foot maximum just to make sure. So there, and it would be difficult to get them around town anyway with bridges, so that's the, it's trailers essentially, so.
As, as part of this.
Thank you.
Is this their special use for truck parking? We anticipate them parking vehicles overnight at this location?
Yes.
No, we'll, we'll get into that. But they can park trucks overnight?
That's part of their special use for outdoor storage is for the trucks and the trailers to be parked overnight in that.
Apparently, and if you want to build a warehouse or something in Montgomery, which I would think would automatically, you know that, yes, we want to park trucks there because it's a warehouse. You can't park trucks there overnight without a special use. It's insane.
No, I disagree with you on that point, but that's a different point, but if they're docked. I'm in the manufacturing district and we can't park trucks overnight, but on occasion do us a truck back in and spend the night? Yes. But do we have trailers spotted and parked there six days a week? No. That's a special use. They can be there overnight if they're docked, right? If they're actually at a dock. So, yeah.
Okay, that's a different business.
It just can't be out in the parking lot.
It seems insane to me that you'd build a trucking facility and not be able to park trucks overnight without a special use. It's, you, you will never get me to, to agree with that, ever.
Okay, let, let's come back to.
We can bring that up some other time, too.
Right, we can have that conversation at different, let's stay, because we've got, we don't, we've got our petitioners here, and let's just try to stay on topic here. So this is a truck repair. Are you doing car repair, too, or is it basically commercial trucks?
All commercial trucks, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions or concerns for Director App, petitioner?
Motion to accept the recommendation of Planning Commission.
Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Bowman. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. So the next three items are the individual ordinances. The first one is for the annexing. That would be item B. Item C is for rezoning the property. And item D is the ordinance for granting special uses and related variations. Those are all first reading, so we will not be voting on those tonight.
Do we have any issue with them being on consent at the next meeting, or do you want them on separate action?
I'm good with consent. I'm good with consent.
I, I would like.
I would rather separate action.
Yeah, I would like them on separate action.
All right.
Thank you. You ready to move on? Okay, moving on to item E, Resolution 2024-047, approving a settlement agreement for the early termination of the MetroNet franchise agreement. Administrators will fall.
Thank you. All right, we're finally ready to bring this one to you. We've had it here a few times. Basically, MetroNet is getting out of the cable TV business. They're going all streaming, and so they would like to end the franchise agreement. Once they're not offering cable service, we wouldn't be getting anything from the franchise agreement anyway. Finance went and looked at the period of time left on the agreement, looked at what we have been receiving in franchise fees and the way it's trending, and put together an estimate of how much we would receive over the remaining life of the agreement. And they are, have agreed to pay us that amount, $7,000. So with that, Jennifer Iyer, you're the one happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Brzarska, second by Youngerman.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Thank you. That carries. Moving on to item F, Resolution 2024-057, approving an amend, an amendment to the Montgomery Development Fund Forgivable Loan Program Guidelines, Director App.
Thank you. As you may recall, at the last meeting, we had a discussion regarding George's application for the forgivable MDF loan and the program requirements. In order to approve their application, we determined that we did need to change the guidelines before we could accept and approve their application. So before you, you have those modifications that were discussed at the last meeting. This changes the guideline limits for the maximum forgivable loan amount from $10,000 to $20,000. And then it also will allow for the reimbursement of expenditures for projects completed no more than six months prior to an application for the loan being submitted. So the resolution before you will officially adopt those changes to the program. The updated application form and program guidelines are in there for you. Once this is adopted, next on the agenda item, we have the MDF forgivable loan approval for George's.
I'd just like to thank staff for thinking outside of the box and come out with a solution so that we can fix this and move forward with it. Thank you, Laura, for your assistance. I'd like to make a motion to accept the agreement, the change in terms.
Second.
Megan, do you need me to say that? Did you hear them, right? Thank you. Go ahead, take the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item G, that is the Resolution 2024-058, authorizing a forgivable loan for George's family dining. Director App.
Yes, so we received the application from George's for forgivable loan program for upgrades to the facade of their building. They submitted for replacing the siding as well as some new awnings on the property. So the project total came to approximately $53,000, and they requested forgivable loan for $20,000. We've reviewed the application, I met with the applicants, the MDF committee reviewed the application. I had their September 16th meeting and recommended approval of the $20,000 loan amount for the project, noting that the work did not start until after the application was submitted, and the applicant is a longstanding business in the community, and therefore recommending approval despite the fact that everything hadn't gone through the process before the work had started. So as we said, we needed to amend the program in order to approve this. So now that you have adopted that resolution, we can adopt this resolution that will approve the loan agreement with George's. This will allow staff to close on the agreement with your authorization.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries. Thank you very much. Item H, Resolution 2024-059, approving a purchase contract for the sale of certain real property, 218 South River Street, and you see the pin listed, Director App.
Yes, so we have before you the sale contract for the 218 South River property. This is one that we had in court for demolition. So we have a buyer. They're purchasing the property for $30,000, which exceeds the 80% of the appraised value. We did already declare this a surplus, so we can now move forward with actually closing on the property. So this will authorize the village administrator and attorney to sign off on the contract and the deed and get that recorded. Property will be sold. And hopefully, we will recouping some of our costs that we had to go through in the demolition of the property and the legal fees.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
That carries. Thank you. Moving on to item I, Professional Service Agreement with Engineering Enterprises in the amount of $44,977 for water year, right, water year? 2024 Water Audit, Water System Improvement Plan, and Non-Revenue Water Reduction Assistance. Director Wolf, please.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. So this PSA coincides with the village moving to our new water source of Lake Michigan with our permit for, from IDNR to withdraw from Lake Michigan contingent upon us being 10% under, or less than 10% water loss. So tonight, this PSA is for us, for EEI to conduct Water Year 24 audit as well as establish and implement the Water System Improvement Plan that's required to be submitted to IDNR as well. There's also assistance with our ongoing non-revenue water loss incorporated in this PSA. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzarska.
That carries. Thank you. Moving on to our final item for separate action, Ordinance 2097, authorizing the issuance of Water Works Revenue Bonds of the Village of Montgomery, Kane and Kendall Counties, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $22,500,000 to improve the Water Works system of the village through the replacement of water mains.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. So this is the village's fourth issuance this year. So we've talked about this at length for the contracts related to the water main replacement for fiscal year 2026. So what's nice about this is that this is through the IEPA, so we get a much lower rate than going out to the market for traditional bonds. So the rate right now for the SRF loans or the IEPA loans is 1.86. And what's also nice is this year, they've extended the term from 20 years to 30 years, giving us longer to pay back that revenues, those principal amounts. So the $22.5 million, like I said, is going to help fund those contracts A through D for fiscal year 26. And although this loan wasn't registered or budgeted for this year, a lot of our projects have come in under budget, so we have a bit of capacity to take on the issuance of the $50,000 estimated bond issuance costs. And I'm happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold one second. I have a question for Jennifer. So I know we had several different sources to fund the project. Where are we at in terms of all, each of those sources? Like, what have we used so far? What do we have left that we can pursue in terms of funding?
Yep, so right now, we have issued the $12.5 million in debt certificates earlier this year. We are using that to fund some of those projects for fiscal year 25. We have also issued TIF bonds, which is unrelated to the water projects. We've refunded the 2013 bonds, which are water bonds. We are currently in a holding pattern right now to reissue the 2017 bonds. And then we are currently working with the US EPA on the WFIya funding and the application to close on that. That would be scheduled for the end of September of next year, currently. So this fits kind of into this, that larger picture. Originally, we hadn't thought that we would get the SRF funding because it's so highly competitive, that we would go out to the market for traditional bonds, but since we were awarded, this is a great opportunity.
Fantastic. All right, thank you. I don't remember who did what. If you've got it, go ahead and take the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzarska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to items for discussion, our 2024 tax levy announcement. Back to Director Maluski.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. So tonight is the announcement for the 2024 levy. So the village must file our levy on the last Tuesday in December with both counties. The Illinois Department of Revenue announced CPI for 2024 to be 3.4% for the Property Tax Extension Limiting Law, or PTAL. Our 23 tax levy extension was $2,493,406. So staff is recommending that the village board announce an estimated levy of $2,750,000. This is an increase of about $249,000 or 10% over the prior year. And this would just allow the village to capture the maximum allowed in having the counties reduce the amount by PTAL. I know this is a kind of a deviation from past practices, but if it is the will of the board to capture everything this year, we definitely want to go above that as the numbers that we're working with are estimates on EAV at this point in time. So this, again, would allow us to capture everything on the table when it relates to that. And if we're looking at the maximum of the 3.4%, we're estimating for that to equate to about $120,870. And if we're looking to just take the new properties, we're estimating that to be just under $35,000. But the board can pass any rate in between those amounts. The first reading is scheduled along with the public hearing at the November 25th board meeting. The second reading and passage is scheduled for the December 9th board meeting. And just as a reminder, the property taxes levied for '24 are actually collected in '25 and fund fiscal year '26. So the property taxes are our third largest revenue source in the general fund and help fund public safety and public works. And I'm happy to answer any questions, should the board have any.
Anyone?
No. My, my answer is no. I mean, I've, I've never voted, I've never voted for a tax increase. I will never vote for a tax increase. The government is one of the worst spenders of money that I've ever witnessed. So I will not vote for a tax increase. Now is not the time. Everything costs more. We just issued $22.5 million in bonds that the residents are going to have to pay through increased water bills. Now is not the time.
Very good. Anyone else? So staff is looking for direction this evening, so that at the next meeting. I, I am, I am interested in freezing the levy as well. I, I could go on about a bunch of stuff, but I, I would prefer to freeze it.
I would like more information on where our, some of the contracts are looking in the next few years. Yes, we have the water concern going on, but do we have any increases coming on over at PD or at Public Works that we need to be looking at that are going to be hitting us extremely hard at all? We kind of take a hard stance on limiting slots, taverns, bars, of making sure that we've said no to most additional tax revenue streams. And I want to make sure that we are going to be able to adequately fund and competitively agree on contracts that may be coming forward, so we don't end up in a situation where we're losing officers again to other municipalities. So I would just like to see what things look like in the next couple of years before we say no to a levy. I, I applaud the board, and this would be, what, year eight, 10?
No, 12.
12 of not.
There was one year we did pass it, but out of, out of the last 12 years, there was only one time we did.
So I, I think that says a lot about the board, and Steve, you say government is, is terrible at managing money. And I mean, in this instance, you are that armor government that is managing money and doing a, and doing a pretty good job of doing it. But just also stating that that's 10 years of, of lost revenue as well. And there's a reason not to tax just to tax, but we need to make sure that if you take an opportunity to capture some additional funds, to make sure that you can go another 12 years of holding a levy as well.
I wish that the other taxing bodies on my tax bill were as wise spenders as this village. I mean, by far, a vast majority goes to Oswego 308, which we get tax increases every year. I, I believe I just read Kendall County wants a 5.3% tax increase. It, it's ridiculous. If the other taxing bodies on my tax bill were as fiscally conservative as this board, we would be in much, much better shape.
I, I agree. I agree with that. You know, I've spent many years on that other board as well and spent several years cutting $3 million, $4 million, $6 million out of that budget just to balance it. It's a hard budget to balance, and it does increase every single year. But we also need to make sure that we are in sound financial shape to continue to provide the top-notch services that we are providing, because we are worth every penny of that tax bill that we as residents are, are paying for our street maintenance, our public service, our safety, snow removal, everything that this village provides. It's worth every penny. I just want to make sure that we are not going to be in a situation two years down the road that we're going to be facing any, any unforeseen costs tonight that we wish we would have levied that extra money. Not to levy to levy, just to have it, but just want to make sure that we can continue to provide that level of service that we are providing.
I, I absolutely understand that. I respect that. I can see the numbers, but my, my answer is still going to be, I'm still going to vote no.
Dan?
Yep, I agree with Trustee Bowman. Well said. I asked Director Maluski to add a, a column in here on the property tax rebates paid by fiscal year, and she passed that out tonight. And she added the FY General Fund Budget, and you can see over the last 11 years, it's gone from $9 million to $15 million. So our budget has increased $6 million since 2013. We've rebated or unleived funds of $2 million over that same time period. I don't want to, I don't want to raise levy either, but I also want to make sure that we're in good shape. We have the police union contract coming up. So just based on other municipalities and what I've seen for increases, those will probably be substantial, I would imagine. So I want to make sure also that, that we're covered. It appears, you know, we're, we're spending a million dollars more every year. Are we, do we have revenue in other areas that will keep up with that million dollars a year without increasing the levy? Because I agree, Trustee Youngerman, I do not want to increase property taxes. But again, we are pretty much the smallest taxing body on the bills. I know, you know, I've said it before, I pay more to Fox Metro or Fox Valley Park District than I do the Village of Montgomery every year. And we get a lot of services out of that, out of that money. The, yeah, this is not a good economy, obviously, to, to increase, especially, like you said, for people in Kendall County. They're going to get a increase from Kendall County, and if they get an increase from us. But I don't want to have to cut services either, or lay off employees, especially if the economy gets soft. It seems like we have turned around, that we've, we've avoided a recession after the inflation. So hopefully, everything calms down here now, now that we, we know the future for the next four years. So hopefully, everything calms down here now, now that we, we know the future for the next four years. And we can, we can not raise the levy. But again, we've lost, and this is cumulative money, by not raising the list. This is not that we've lost this money one time. We consistently are going to lose this money every year. So I think, yeah, I think a little bit more information would be good on how staff feels that if, if we're in a good financial, stable situation where we can freeze it again this year without putting employees or services of the residents in jeopardy because we have a short funding issue, where we don't have enough money to continue. Because even though we're really not residentially growing right now, you know, I was just talking to Director Wolf about this before the board meeting. You know, we now have these two swap loaders, and they're using those for collecting leaves, right? Well, the trees are just getting bigger, there's going to be more and more leaves, and we have a finite amount of time of when we can collect those leaves. Sometime in the future, Director Wolf's going to come and say, I need another truck, or I need another piece of equipment for more leaves. So we're going to continuously have these needs, these increased needs as our infrastructure ages, we're going to be putting more money out there. We're going to need, it's just, I don't want to be short either, I guess. We need to really make sure that we're not just looking at next year, but five years down the road, right, to try to figure out where we're at. You know, if, if prices go up 10%, you know, conventional wisdom says, well, your, your sales tax revenue is going to go up 10% also. But what happens if prices moderate? And it's happened before, where prices start to back off and come down, where we're going to lose sales tax revenue. Plus, we don't know what the state's going to do. I just read an article the other day that, you know, the portion that they rebate back to the cities is now they're contemplating reducing that because of their budget shortfalls. So can we rely on that from the state, that number? I don't want to be in the position where we have to go to the residents like we did the last recession, which wasn't our fault, it was recession, and say, we're going to have to reduce services because we have to reduce staff, right? So.
And I think it's fair to say, you know, all of us sitting up here, nobody wants to raise it, and nobody wants to be in that position either. It's, but none of us have that crystal ball to figure out what's happening.
Right.
So we, we have to go with the information we have now. And what is always tough for me, well, it's tough because we don't, we haven't seen what our budget's going to be for next year as well.
Right.
And then to have this conversation. I wish the timing was different.
The way to take the pressure off the residential sale, the residential sector for taxes is to increase commercial, retail, industrial, and manufacturing. We should be concentrating on that and taking the pressure off the residential sector. We had Charis that the other taxing bodies didn't want to give any sort of sales tax incentives. Even though they're not educating more children, they're not doing certain things, I would rather have 70% of what that is, as opposed to 100% of nothing, is still nothing.
Right.
I don't know why some of these other taxing bodies think commercial, retail, industrial, manufacturing is so terrible. Oswego wants to put houses up everywhere. There, there's a huge influx of children into the 308 school district, which pushes, pushes the tax burden on us because we're in Oswego 308.
Right.
Not all, not all growth is good growth. And Oswego needs to understand that not all residential growth is good growth. They need to concentrate on manufacturing, industrial, commercial, and retail. That's how you take the pressure off the residential side.
Right, yeah, rooftops, they want services. And that's, and that's just the way it is, and I agree. That's why I've been focused, why I've sat at the seat on commercial development, because I agree 100%. That's, that's what we want, we want the commercial development. We do have the property tax rebate, we have some flexibility in that also, where if we do raise a levy and we find out we don't need that money, we can increase the amount that we're rebating back to people. So that's, that's what we have control over, right? So if we do increase the levy, and we don't need the money, we can increase the property tax rebate. But if we don't increase the levy and we need the money, then we're kind of between a rock and a hard spot. And so, and unfortunately, we can't control what commercial or industrial moves into the village or, or large retail. I mean, we can go out, we can go after it, and I think Patrick does a good job of that, trying to bring business into the village. But we don't, we don't have control over that. I tell people all the time, I say, well, you know, why don't we get a, you know, why can't we get an Olive Garden in Montgomery? Oh, we'll call them up and tell them to start building next week. It doesn't work that way. They have to want to come. Their market resources got to say they need to put an Olive Garden in this location. We don't dictate who moves into town. We can go out and get them, we can try and sympathize for them to come into town, but we can't force them to, to come to town or to build, so. It's a tough spot, you're right, yeah, with the budget and the cycle.
Ben?
So I'm going to side with Matt Baumann as well. I'm, I'm okay with an increase in tax levies since you've only done it once in 12 years, but I'd like to see more information.
Yeah, I agree. I think seeing some more numbers and what the impact would look like to an average resident's tax bill, considering, I think, what we're below 4% of my tax bill is the Village of Montgomery, so what does that look like? And compared to what the county's 5.3% increase they're talking about doing, how is that going to ratchet down to John Q. Public here in Montgomery? It'd be good to get some of that information together.
Was that helpful, Jennifer?
More than you wanted.
Kind of.
Yes, it was.
And does that still give us enough time with, when we have to take care of?
We can put some numbers together, and then we can discuss further at that first reading if we need to make any modifications prior to that second reading.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion as well, I appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to newer unfinished business. I'm going to start on my left. Ben, anything? Doug?
I had a conversation with Administrator Zoffel earlier because we had some discussions related to the fire district's request, looking for some equipment and things. So Administrator Zoffel had a meeting with State Representative Hanson, and he's doing some introductions, and he's going to see if he can try to help us possibly look at some funding that might help. So we're going to continue to peruse that before we come back and look at having, make a decision to do something here.
Okay. Steve? Matt? Dan?
Yeah, I have one thing. I, I attended the senior lunch at Riverview today, and it was well-attended. And everybody had a good time. I think staff is doing an excellent job since they took over the senior lunch. And while I'll say, I won't say it was a rocky start, but it was, there were some changes, and some people, seniors didn't embrace those changes at the beginning. I think they're happy now. Seems like everybody's accepted the fact that you have to buy the tickets in advance and, and the minimal price increase. It didn't appear that it has, that stopped people from coming. I also attended the one in September, and it was well-attended also. So, yeah, kudos to staff for, for taking that over. And they actually made some changes to certain things, too. They had some door prizes today and stuff, so. I didn't win, my wife won, so, but, yeah. And, yeah, she won a gift certificate to Riverview, so it was, it was nice, too, that they had. The prizes were for businesses in the village, and, you know, it was something outside the village. But, yeah, I'm just hoping my wife takes me to Riverview with her and spend the $20. We'll see.
You'll have to hold this door. All right, let's see. You see our list of future meetings, we have no executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Youngerman and Marisak.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Rozeska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes, thank you. We are adjourned.